And we are recording, confirming, I don't know why I'm looking at you, Trisha. We're confirming that we are recording to upload later. And staff can hear me on the line.
Yeah, I can hear you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. Okay, with that, back over to planning.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So before we turn it back over to Nicole to pick up where we left off, reviewing the proposed new pre-consultation process. We did have with us our external legal counsel to help assist and answer any questions. Unfortunately, he's now had to leave at 4:30. So any questions that come up that are related to legal or the review that they did will collect those questions and put them into any future staff report or put them as part of any future public hearing if we choose to have another public meeting for this item. So I just wanted to make that clear. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Nicole.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor. So as previously discussed, we are proposing a new form or an amended form of the pre-consultation process, which we've called the collaborative consultation process. And a visual depiction of it is on the screen in front of you. So the blue boxes indicate just steps in the process as they stand today. The red arrow identifies the legislative timeline with the red stop sign shape indicating when legislative timelines would end for a file. The green award type sign is showing when an application would be deemed complete. What's important, though, is the yellow circles. So the yellow circles indicate loop backs or essentially times in which additional information is needed. And we have to go back to the applicant, and they have to do additional work or provide some additional information. And that recontinues the process. And so you'll note in the current process, there's two loop backs, one before the green box and one after. So that's indicating that there's loop backs happening prior to deeming an application complete as well as after, as we're moving through the process. The proposed collaborative consultation process, the intent is to reduce those loop backs for everyone. And also, you'll see that there is one, just in regards to additional information required prior to deeming the application complete. So prior to those statutory requirements being initiated that require the refund of fees. And it's to note that this also is not an uncommon process, albeit maybe by a different name. But this is a process similar to what many municipalities across the province are choosing to use to ensure applications reflect all the required documents and to move applications towards a complete application in a positive way. Our focus was on a positive experience for everyone in regards to customer experience as well as keeping the process transparent. And so not putting in penalties such as incomplete application fees and other components like that. We're not proposing those. We're choosing to focus on positive collaboration through this proposed process. Associated with the update to the pre-consultation process and overall process improvement within the planning department is also linked to the proposed or initiated City View Portal, which actually is available for planning applications now. It's similar, almost the same, to the process implemented by the building departments. So applicants are able to submit an application online. The initiative, which predates the legislative bill changes, is intended to be linked with an online payment system in the new year, at which time all applications will be required to be submitted via the portal. And then we will have resources available to help people do so. This new option will also allow people to pay virtually, which will integrate with the current pre-consultation process and fee collection and will allow staff to review submitted files prior to opening the virtual payment option, just as payments are currently separated from a submission now to ensure that unintended refunds aren't required to be issued and funds that are not currently needed are not held by the county unnecessarily. And so this process will also save the applicant from having to physically drop off a check or come into the office unless they choose to do that. And it also allows applicants to view the file status in real time, to see comments and other related file items. And this will be tied with new pre-consultation forms, new development application forms, and other reference material, such as the terms of reference documents that I noted earlier. One additional process change that is necessary due to the impacts of the legislative changes is to remove the ability for some types of combined applications. Again, this is a common approach to these fees across the province. So prior to the bills, specifically Bill 109, concurrent applications were permitted and at times encouraged to reduce project review timeframes. Due to the differing timeframes between application types and the newly instituted refund process, it's no longer prudent to the county to accept concurrent applications as the timelines cannot be met and will result in refunded fees and additional costs would have to be absorbed by the county. Accordingly, staff are proposing a change to process which would in which land use amendments, such as official plan amendments and zoning bylaw amendments, have to be in effect prior to a site plan application or plan of condo or subdivision application before they're considered complete. While these applications were previously considered premature, the concurrent process was applied in the spirit of collaboration. Unfortunately, flexibility is no longer available to municipalities to do so. Specifically, the following applications, as noted on the slide, will no longer be permitted to be filed concurrently. In regards to site plan control, two major components changed through the Planning Act. So Bill 109 introduced language to Section 41 of the Planning Act regarding applicant consultation with the municipality before submitting a site plan application. The amendment also allows municipalities to explicitly require consultation by bylaw. Previously, it was recommended or available essentially through the Planning Act, but the language was altered to allow the requirement of the process. This is intended, this is also tied to a 30-day evaluation period, which previously did not apply to site plan applications. And this time is intended to allow municipalities to ensure that all the required information materials were submitted as part of the application. The second component of the site plan control changes or is nested underneath site plan control is a change to the definition of development. And this may be familiar to the council through other reports. The definition was altered to explicitly not include "the construction, erection, or placing of a building or structure for residential purposes on a parcel of land if that parcel of land will contain no more than 10 residential units, unless the parcel of land includes any land in a prescribed area." And to note, the prescribed area, which was identified through a later Ontario regulation, is irrelevant in the Norfolk County context as it incorporates the shorelines of the Great Lakes, so our Lake Erie, as well as the river and stream valleys, whether or not they currently have a water course. In regards to subdivisions, the Planning Act was amended as follows. So it added the authority to create a regulation that would limit the matters that could be dealt with as conditions of subdivision approval. And it added new rules that would allow a one-time reinstatement of draft plan approval, where the draft plan approval had lapse, subject to certain condition, conditions, I should say. At this time, we are not proposing any changes in that regard in our documents. The second component, though, Bill 23 amended the Planning Act, which formally required approval authorities or municipalities to hold a public meeting prior to rendering a decision on plan of subdivisions or certain types of condominiums. This component has been removed. However, staff are recommending the continued use of a non-statutory meeting to bolster transparency and clear opportunities for public input, so keeping it at status quo despite that change. In relations to some of the terms included in the changes, one of them was in regards to an area of employment. So areas of employment are designated in official plans for clusters of business and economic uses. This change of the term was introduced to be consistent with the proposed Planning or Provincial Policy Statement, or PPS, which still remains in draft form. But it aligns where areas of employment previously included commercial and institutional uses. They're now excluding those. So no commercial, institutional, unless that commercial component is directly related to the industrial use. The amendment does include a new bridging subsection that allows municipalities to maintain employment areas with existing institutional or commercial uses and not associated with manufacturing or warehousing, provided that the use was lawfully established prior to the date the subsection came into effect. So that will be further evaluated through the Grow Norfolk Project as well as that official plan conformity exercise in relation to employment areas. Changes to the Planning Act pertaining directly to parkland dedication and development charges will be addressed in its own separate further amendment, so the second component to this. However, in this component, we are proposing minor technical changes as far as references to provincial ministries, position titles, and removal of references to inactive committees such as the NEAC or Norfolk County Environmental Advisory Committee, as well as any smaller components related to ministries that may have changed in the recent past. So in regards to next steps, not unlike other public hearings, the major component, as noted at the beginning of this presentation, is to consider the public input through this meeting. This next phase would also be the review of technical comments provided by our technical agencies. And then ultimately, a recommendation report would be provided by staff through the direction of council. And so with that, I have the recommendation for you, and I will open it for any questions.
Okay, thanks, Nicole. Questions of committee? Counselor Van Adrishe?
Do I have to have it? I guess, okay, because we're taping, okay. If we go back to the proposed collaborative consultation process, since I can't read the little blue things there. You've got a, it seems, just by appearance, it seems to be a longer process. What is the average time of the pre-consultation? What's the timeline there?
Thank you, through Madam Mayor, to the counselor. That's a good question. The average time for a pre-consultation has changed over the past few years for various reasons. And we've been working hard to tighten up the turnaround time from a staff perspective. What happens right now, when somebody submits a request for a pre-consultation, it's received. If there's an application form and a fee associated with it, it's assigned to a staff person. And then the next available date is identified. We are booking out a number of months right now. Our pre-consultation times do fill up. So we've added another layer where we're doing what we call a paper pre-consultation for areas that don't require an in-person meeting. Through the pre-consultation, ahead of the pre-consultation meeting, staff get together with development engineering to ensure we've aligned our comments ahead of the actual meeting. At the meeting, staff share their feedback. And we've been working very hard to reduce the timeframe for those meeting notes to be completed and provided back to the developer, the proponent. We recognize there's been a long gap there. So one of the commitments through this process is to create a new checklist. So instead of a more detailed document, we're going to a checklist. So for the planning, there'd be checkboxes between what's required. For development engineering, there'd be a checkbox. Any other departments would have their checkbox. And we're setting it up so it's completed during the meeting. It might take a day or two to review if there's anything that comes up through that process, but to get that back to the proponent within a week. And then once they have that, it's back to the proponent to do what they need to do before they submit their application.
So they come in once, if I may. If they come in once, they start conversation with you. You start going through the process. So it takes a day through the pre-consultation. And then you go to each departments and whatever, and they put together the notes that gets back to the developer, and then they come back again. So within... Am I understanding that correctly? Because this proposed pre-consultation process looks to me like I'm in one day, I'm back in another day, I'm back in another day. Is it that way, or is it all done at once?
Through the chair. So what the proposed new process is, it's sort of a realignment of things that are already happening, but making it more clear and transparent. So the pre-consultation happens, the developer or the applicant understands all of the things that are required for their particular application. And I must indicate, for those where the proposal doesn't conform to the applicable zoning, the proponents told in advance, and they have the choice to go forward with the pre-con or not. So they choose to go forward with the pre-consultation, they get their list. And then it's up to them, depending on the complexity of the technical documents, to put those together towards their submission. So it could be a matter of months, or it could be longer, depending on the complexity and the type of study that's required before that actual submission comes in.
Okay, and when they have it, they have the documents all in order, and we move forward. And, but they haven't paid. Apparently, we don't pay until we're done. Is that correct? Or can that be held up to say, you don't have it processed because you didn't pay? I'm just curious.
Thank you, through the chair. I believe there's been some differing opinions. I'm not sure what you mean about fee, but the payment comes through once the document, once the submission has been deemed complete, then the payment submission goes through. So through City View Portal, the way it works is somebody would upload their application, and staff would then review it. There'd be a pre-submission review to ensure that all the documents are what we were asked for. And then, once that's good, then they would receive an email. And once Portal's working for payment, we're not quite there yet, they'd be able to pay online or they would be able to submit their payment in another way.
And another question, if I may, if I may. I've read that you're telling me that in the province, and you've listed a few areas that use this new process now. What about our local municipalities? Have you delved into them and can tell me what they're doing and how much time they take? Or are we behind them, ahead of them, whatever?
Thank you for that question. So we've spent considerable amount of time through the chair reviewing and looking at what our neighbors are doing, fees that they're charging and collecting. We've looked broadly at larger urban centers. And I'm going to turn it over to Nicole. She actually has a binder, because we have reviewed and assessed what would make sense for Norfolk. So I'll turn it to Nicole to answer what our neighbors are doing, the fees they're charging, and the distinction or the difference in our approach.
Thank you, through the chair. So yeah, we did do a review of the surrounding municipalities. Looking at a good comparator, often we look at Brant County, for example, for their approach, they're looking at still a submission component as well as the pre-consultation fee, not dissimilar to what our current practice is. However, their fee structure in response to that is quite different. So whereas we are charging a pre-consultation fee and are proposing a subdivided fee for a submission review, they have a pre-consultation fee, which is more than what both of those would be combined. So it's over $1,000. And the current, in 2023, an application review, there isn't a $1,000 fee plus a cumulative $1,000 for each resubmission. So that's clarified further in their 2024 fees. So that would mean every resubmission, rather than working with the applicant and going through that yellow loop prior to the green block without fee, they're charging a accumulated fee. So the first resubmission's over $1,000. The second resubmission is over $2,000. The third is over $3,000. So there is a penalty essentially to that active process. They do charge a minor pre-consultation fee as well as a pre-consultation, a standard fee. For other municipalities, Haldeman doesn't have a ton of information. It looks like currently a development pre-consultation fee only in regards to their process, but I know they're actively updating their processes as well. Looking at larger urban areas around us, the city of Branford chose not to do a formalized two-phase process. However, I can attest to that being their current process as well. But instead, their fees are substantially higher. So they still have an over $1,000 fee for pre-consultation, and then an additional $1,000 for engineering, complete application fee, $1,000.
And I understand your point, but what I'm interested in is the timeline. So if you're in Brant, it takes you this long to get from this stage to that stage. How long we take to go from this stage to that stage?
You mean the minutes returned after a pre-con?
Yeah, all that type of thing, because shovels in the ground. Like, if I start over here with this process, am I slower in Norfolk than I would be in Brant or Branford or whatever? Or did you compare that?
Through the chair. So that isn't necessarily data that's publicly provided. I can say from discussions and through the work that the different municipalities are doing, we're all struggling to meet the statutory timeframes as well as moving pre-consultations through quickly. And there's been different approaches requiring differing levels of staff to try to move the process more quickly. If the council would like more information from our neighbors, I can inquire with the staff. But from anecdotally, it sounds very similar to our process timelines.
Probably a lot of, sorry, one second, contributing factors to that, I guess, development applications in and out and staff resources and so on. But the, I see both of you, the comments about the review, I think that would be very helpful for council members to see because it's not often that we get context on the user fees unless it's budget time. And so it's not a fee that's top of mind for me when I think about what we're charging and what people are coming in to pay for. And if that is truly the case, then in Norfolk, sitting in a good position where we're working with the development community, I think it's a published document that would serve all of council well to have handy. I just want to confirm something before I continue on. Everybody's lined up for questions here. So in this current process, you're making a commitment for the checklist to be returned in one week's time after the initial pre-con.
Yes.
And so unfortunately, we have no one on the line from Environmental Services today. So how can we make that commitment? I know it's not a planning question, but...
Thank you. I did have a moment to connect with Mr. Grace and had confirmed a response. So he is aware, and we've been working very closely with development engineering in putting this process together and have worked with them closely in terms of the checklist. And there is a commitment in the new year for this to be addressed and responded to.
Okay, I have more questions on that, but I will go back to council and then jump in at the end. Counselor Van Passen, then Brunton, then Huffman, then Moschelli.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. That was one of the items that was going to be on my little question list already. Because it's been quite common over the last few years that a pre-consultation meeting, that can be up to six months before they get that scheduled, and then six more months to get the minutes back. So what do we need to do to make sure that that doesn't happen? Or is that something that we include in our bylaw that we commit to? Can we make sure that you can get your pre-consultation meeting in less than 30 days and that the minutes will be back within a week? You know, how do we put that in so we can ensure that? Because I think that's more than acceptable and fair to both sides of the equation.
Yeah, I fully agree with you. I think it's time we probably set a standard and make some commitments. But we should probably do that when this report comes back and Mr. Grace is in the room, so that... Do you want to add something? Go ahead.
Thank you. So just to add some context, Counselor Van Passen, we recognize scheduling a pre-con does take time. There's only so many days in a week and so many staff. And so we have introduced the paper pre-consultation as an alternative. And the other item that we've been talking about in staff and what we do when we schedule is the prioritization of those pre-consultations. So if it's a certain type of development and thinking out loud, and perhaps this is something we take back for the team to review, perhaps we embed some of that in our policy around the prioritization of pre-consultations and how they're scheduled. That might be something that we could look at and bring back for consideration. And what is prioritized, whether it's employment-related or subdivision-related or whatnot? But we could certainly bring that forward. And we recognize and know that the turnaround time for getting those pre-con notes back hasn't been the best, and we've been working hard to address it and make that commitment once this is in place going forward in the new year.
Okay, thank you. So can we just leave that as direction? When it comes back, you can make some suggestions, and then we can discuss it and go from there. Counselor Brunton is next.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. I'm trying to, I guess, understand all this in terms, similar to what Counselor Van Adrishe said, timing here is important to me. But can I relate this to the subdivision we just dealt with in Dover, for example? Was there a pre-con on that? And if so, how long ago, roughly?
Thank you, through the chair. I don't know if that's a good example because that was an application that was submitted in 2017. But I do have another example.
Sorry, if I can interject, submitted in 2017 and didn't get dealt with until today because of water capacity issues, not because of...
All right, give me another example then, if you could. Maybe there was one that we dealt with here, the Waterford one recently we dealt with, and that dealt with residential and commercial, correct? Pardon? Well, I'll give you one, the one up by the Travel Lodge. That was recent and was new. Okay? Do you under... Okay, yeah. The one that we just dealt with at the Travel Lodge was a few months back, and it was new. Was there a pre-con on that? That was all the condos and townhouses, I believe, up there by, across from the Travel Lodge.
Queensway.
Queensway. Was there a pre-con on that?
Through the chair, yes, there was a pre-consultation.
And how long, can you tell me after they had their pre-con, that it took them to get into this council chamber, roughly?
I don't know that off the top of my head. There's two components to that. So there would have been them getting their notes back to know what they had to submit. And then it would have been on them to prepare any of the supportive documentation and then make that submission. But Mohammed's here, and he stayed today to give sort of the development planning perspective. And maybe Mohammed can help illustrate how it works and the benefit of this change and how it will benefit from the development planning process.
Well, if I may just make one other comment before he does that. I read in here where you say, an official plan amendment or a zoning amendment for a subdivision, we'll say, is all that can be done with those two, that one application, but two zoning and official plan, right? That's all you'll listen to to start. Is that correct? That's the way this document reads.
Through the chair. So we are proposing to no longer allow concurrent applications, except for official plans and zoning would be able to maintain their concurrent status. That's identified through the Planning Act.
Okay, so let me elaborate on that for a minute. So if I come in to you for a pre-con, I don't know how long it took me to get my meeting, but if I come in and I say, I need official plan amendment and a zoning amendment, can I bring in a draft plan, what my subdivision would look like, and any other information you can look at at that time? Is that allowed in a pre-con?
Through the chair, yes, that is permitted, absolutely.
I'd like to listen to how he addresses all that.
Through Madam Mayor, just to add on this particular question. Generally, when an official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment comes in, there are draft plan or concept plan comes in as well, so that we can see the conceptual plan of the proposed development. So in a sense, we get those draft plan or concept plans. But after the official plan and zoning bylaw is approved, then the formal subdivision application comes in.
Okay, well, I'm still, I'm trying to picture timeframes here. That's where I'm hung up. But I'll leave that for another question, perhaps. Thank you.
Maybe that's something that staff can also return to us. I think it's going to be hard to answer today when each development is different in nature and scaled and sized differently. But... But I think that it's a fair question when, you know, we're hearing quite a bit about the timelines that, you know, it's taking to get minutes and so on. So maybe when this returns, you can put together a couple of different scenarios of application types and give us an average turnaround time that's frank and honest about, you know, what, when people are getting hung up in the process, caught up. Is it development engineering? Is it planning? What is it? And then we can go from there and help identify what the issues are. And, and, you know, if it ultimately comes down to resources, then that's something we're going to have to help staff address. But we're not going to know unless we have a better understanding of where the pinch points are. Counselor Michelle Lee? Then Huffman, 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 Michelle Lee.
Thank you, Mayor Martin, through you to staff. Just wondering to get a better picture, what is the complement right now of, in the planning staff department? Are we at full complement or are we still needing some bodies?
Thank you, through the chair. At this moment, we are, we still have one vacancy and we are short a senior planner right now.
I would be assuming that having a vacancy and being short a senior planner is a bit of a detriment when we're talking about meeting some of these timelines? Would that be a fair assumption?
Through the chair, it's been a challenge, but I would say we've been, with applications submitted through July, we've actually been doing quite well. That's with Mohammed continuing to carry a lot of files. So at some point, we'd like to shift and have that senior planner pick up those files.
Do we have any timeline, Tricia, as to when we could have someone in place? I know that's more maybe HR, but just wondering if you have any idea?
We know provincially, there's a shortage with professional planners. I was at a county director's forum earlier this fall and every single rural municipality that was there was short planners. So it's, it's a challenge and there's other issues that make it challenging for Norfolk.
Counselor Michelle Lee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think a lot of the discussion we just had from yourself and my colleagues has touched on this question. So through you to, to staff, I, I do think it would be really helpful to, to get some kind of a, maybe a sketch outline about, you know, what, what the sort of, maybe we'll call it standard timelines or average timelines should be for some of these steps. It would be very helpful, I think, to members of council when, when we get contacted by, by developers or individual residents as well to know that, you know, okay, when they say something is taking this length of time, that we have some frame of reference to know if that's an inordinately a long time or if that's what it should be, that type of thing. So I, I do think it would be helpful if, if we had a little bit more of a, you know, an outline of what all of these procedures should be like and how long they should take.
Thanks, Counselor Duffy.
Thank you. If I could just add and just do a promo. We've, through, through Madam Mayor, we, we have updated our webpage. So just to that point, there is a number of references and updated information on the planning webpage. And through this process, we will be doing a refresh. There are brochures on our webpage right now. They're dated, so we, they will be updated pending any decision here. But there's lots of good information right now and there's some Planning 101 videos that I urge folks to take a look at because they might be helpful as well.
Madam Mayor, just additional, second one. Yes, thank you, Tricia. And I was remiss there. I did want to mention that I was hoping that this would get on to the webpage as soon as possible when, when it's available. And also the, the starring roles that you yourself and Mayor Martin have been playing in those videos. Very informative. Thank you.
Counselor Duffy.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, through you to staff. Tricia, I think you talked about this earlier and I just wanted to maybe circle back. We are moving to an online payment process for fees. When do you think that will happen?
Thank you. We're, we're working with IT and finance on that as we speak. I look to Nicole, she's been part of the technical discussions that we're hopeful early, early in the new year. It's, it's working right now with building, so we just need to build, have that similar framework in place for planning.
Okay, good to hear. And then can I just ask a question related to public meetings for subdivisions? So I understand no longer formally required through the Planning Act. Staff recommending to continue. I, I think I agree with that. I guess I'm just wondering, and this might be a question to pose to legal, but is there a mechanism for the developer or their agent to oppose this if it is not required by statute?
Through the chair. So as long as we're hitting the legislated timelines, not necessarily. So what was interesting about the change is that the public hearing itself was removed, but not the, the need or the necessity of public consultation. So if it was council's opinion that that was a good avenue to achieve that and to maintain that, that's staff's recommendation. But all of the standard consultation processes that exist today with circulations and, and standard noticing, all of that still applies. So it's just another more formal avenue to get that public consultation that is, is still required under the Planning Act.
Thank you. Just to add to that, I've made, I've added it to the list to get our external legal counsel to confirm, noting he has reviewed down to the minutia, the both draft bylaws and only had very minor changes to what was proposed there.
Counselor Columbus.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the last year or two, this council's dealt with many numerous applications from Simcoe, Port Dover, Dalhuy, Cortland, Port Rowan even. Do you expect, like with the fact that interest rates are up and that the trades kind of are starting to lay people off, do you expect that there will be a decline in the number of subdivision residential development applications coming forward?
Thank you, through the chair. That's a good question. I don't, I don't know how to answer that. We're still having folks come in for applications and go through the pre-consultation. I believe we're already booked into February for our current pre-consultation. So from that perspective, from the planning process, we haven't seen, it's slowed, but not significantly. It's, I think it's more on the building permit side that there's, that things are slowing. But from the planning, I still think they're lining up to get things in place.
The website is actually quite beautiful. I just opened it up. That's nice and it's organized. So just to confirm, so a lot of the legal review is, is identifying some gaps for Norfolk County specifically in language maybe that we weren't including that could have been a liability for us down the road. Is that a fair assessment?
Through the chair, yes, that was part of the review.
Okay. And I guess I should take this opportunity while we're picking on planning to pass along some comments I got from the home builders dinner the other night that wasn't all bad. Lots of, lots of trouble came for environmental services. That's certainly fair, but engineering. But I think, you know, as long as we're open-minded and always trying to improve and increase communication and get back to the public in a timely manner, like we'll always be having this conversation. So staff, I hope you're not taking it to heart. The city view portal was something from a building perspective that was addressed at the home builders dinner and mentioned favorably for builders applying for permits. And compared to other municipalities, the, the ease of use for that was noted. And so I think there's some excitement looking forward to implementing the city view from the planning perspective as well. But I guess on a high level, if council gets the information on the average timelines on our municipal comparators in front of us and we know we have a resource issue, what would staff's comments be then when you're essentially taking one meeting and now doubling it into two? How do you know that you're not creating more work for yourself and just slowing up the timeline further?
So we, Madam Mayor, we have actually implemented informally the pre-submission review already. We've been doing it, I don't know, six or eight months informally. And for those consultants who actively engage with us and work with us, it's worked out quite well. And that's where we're seeing the efficiency. So we've, it, it's not that this is new. We've sort of piloted this informally and would now just be embedding it in our official plan to make it transparent and clear and create a clear path. But I think Mohammed can also speak to it from boots on the ground and how it's been working.
Through, Madam Mayor, I can give some data after July 1st. So as you know, that after July 1st, all the applications coming in, we have to maintain the planning at timeline. Unless, I mean, if we don't able to do that, then we have to give back the uncertain amounts, the application fee. From July 1st, we received, we completed a total of nine applications, among them four zoning bill amendment, which has been completed within 30 days, within 90 days as per planning at timelines. We received two official plan amendment, which has been completed within 120 days as per planning at timeline. And we also completed three site plan applications within six days as per the planning at timeline. So, so far after July 1st, we were able to meet the timeline 100%. And that was done with the integration of pre-submission meeting that Nicole explained about the new process, that once the pre-consultation happened and then once the applicant compiled all the documents and ready for submission, they requested for a pre-submission meeting. Generally, once a request came, we tried to schedule a meeting within one week. And after the meeting happens, if all the, I mean, all the documents are appropriately provided, then we were able to provide them a dimming complete application within two to three weeks. But that can be even, I believe, radius once we are going, moving forward to the actual process from 2024. But overall, from July 1st, the result is quite positive and we were able to meet the timeline as per the planning act.
Okay, and then those timelines that we're meeting, which I know are difficult to meet and I know we have missed them before, so it's great that we're meeting them. But are we, when you say 100% of the time, does that mean we're returning a complete application to the applicant or the agent on the 90th day, on the 120th day? Or are you just using those figures saying we did it within that timeline? Are they getting them back earlier? Or are we just right there?
Yeah, through Madam Mayor. The pre-submission meeting, the result of the pre-submission meeting is dimming the application complete. So once we deemed it complete, we asked for a, we asked for the check. And once they submitted the check, then it is formally dimming complete.
I understand that.
And then the time starts at that point.
And, okay, okay, so then it's coming to council and being dealt with. Because you're doing the work upfront prior to.
Right.
Okay. So I guess if I were to summarize, then we're going to receive this as information today. There hasn't been a lot of questions for legal, but we can go back to council if there are. But what I heard from council is we'd like some information on our average timelines for a few types of builds, few developments. We'd like to see some of those municipal comparators. And then we'd like commitments from staff that we're able to commit to the development community on receiving minutes or receiving checklist and then additionally minutes. And then we can have further discussion on that. Is, did I miss anything from anyone's comments? Counselor Van Passen, go ahead.
I, I have one more very small little technical thing when I read through it. It is in the, the draft official plan draft bylaw. It's page 36 and it talks about recycling. And it says that recycling shall be the policy of the county, that recycling collection shall be available throughout the county. Now, the changes that are being made at the provincial level on who does recycling, maybe we've got to change that word shall to something else? Otherwise, we are on the hook for it somehow.
Through the mayor. So to, just to clarify, that section was included just to incorporate ministry name changes that were outdated, so that nothing was changed in that component. But if there is applicable legislation changes, that is something that I can absolutely include.
The actual people creating the problem are supposed to be paying for it and they're changing rules. So if we're, I noticed a lot of those changes in those, what, 60 pages are just to change their government ministry names and things like that. But this one, we better like change that one word because shall means we have to and like maybe we coordinate something, some wording like that. And I suppose if I'm getting really technical, right at the beginning, it talks about this source water protection. Has the Lehman Dam been decommissioned yet or is it in the process still? Cause it's still in there too, because you changed the ministry names, but you know, you didn't change anything else.
Through the mayor, that was brought to my attention through our source water protection team. And so that will also be identified as a local change that needs to be updated. Yeah.
Counselor Columbus.
And I just had a concern with page 19, item K. It talks about the Norfolk Heritage Committee having some input into the street furnishing. And I just wonder if the local BIAs cannot be added there? Because in many cases, they do supply bike racks, garbage receptacles, benches and street lamps. So they should probably be included in that for discussion purposes.
Through the mayor, staff can absolutely review that and bring that back.
My last question would be, when can we expect to have this back before us?
Thank you. So part of today, it's a public hearing. I believe there's at least one, perhaps two members of the public that will want to speak to it. So staff are also, we've scheduled at least one meeting next week to meet with some folks from the development community to also receive feedback and listen. So it would be early in the new year. Based on what we're hearing right now, probably not January. February is probably more realistic, but also making sure that we're listening to the, to the development community and then going back for any of those legal review pieces. So perhaps I could say Q1 of next year.
Okay. All right. With that, are we okay, council, if I touch in? All right, so both of you hoping to speak? Just one of you, Mr. Valley? Okay. Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor Martin and members of staff and councillors. Pleased to speak to you today on behalf of a boatload of developer clients that we have. George Egg Inc., Egg Inc. Homes subdivision in Port Dover. Mike Lustchuk, also development applications in Port Dover. Mark Esquire in Simcoe. Mark Siegel from MDRB Developments in Port Dover and Port Rowan. Paul Van Betham, condominium project in Waterford. Roger Sharma from Legend Tire, who is a subdivision of Waterford Industrial Plant in Simcoe. Denzo Developments Residential Subdivision in Simcoe. Mr. Henry Boer, Boer Homes Condominiums in Simcoe. The Barrel Pizza Restaurant Commercial Development here in Simcoe. Paula Coin, Condominium in Waterford. David Van Elslander, Condominium Developments throughout the county. Inner Bay Developments Current Application in Port Rowan. Mike and Sandy Klauffer of Titan Trailers Residential and Industrial Development in Cortland. The Canyac Family Maplewood Nursing Homes Institutional Development in Simcoe. Mr. Jeff Bauch, BB Ranch, Simcoe, or sorry, St. Williams. Pure Spirits Development Commercial Development in Dalhuy. Gabriel Gasparini War Construction Residential Development in Dalhuy. Paul Hallock of Woodway Trails Residential Development in Simcoe. Tom and Angie O'Hara Villages of Waterford, Silos and the Orchard Square, all in Waterford. Chris Carson and Scott Biddle Residential Development in Dalhuy. Calabrex Developments Residential Development in Dalhuy and Simcoe. Sylvester Investments here in Simcoe. Sam Bunting Prominent Homes and the Holman Norfolk Home Builders Association. I come to you speaking on behalf of all of these developers. I only have five minutes as I know, so I'm going to talk in a very high level here. First off, we think there's a lot of really good work in what's in front of you today. And I congratulate staff. I know that they have a lot of development applications on their plate and therefore it's very hard to find time to work on these kinds of policy develop, policy projects. So thank you for that. There's some really good work here on additional residential units. We've asked for that. The staff has responded with that. That's going to help us bring ADUs to projects like what we discussed in our Waterford projects with council. It's going to, those changes in the bylaw are necessary so that we can bring those forward. There's a lot of good. It's going to, those changes in the bylaw are necessary so that we can bring those forward. There's a lot of good work there. We think there's a step in the right direction. Maybe some more discussion is required. But we do have some concerns with things, and I've heard a lot of discussion around the council table about things that are of concern to us and that long list of clients. Many of the process changes that we're talking about today have come in respect to two pieces of legislation, the More Homes For Everyone Act and the More Homes Built Faster Act. And that's what I'm hearing around the council tables timelines. And we're concerned, we're very concerned that the, that the processes that are being proposed in this official plan amendment will actually provide more hoops for developers to go through and will extend the timelines. And we're very concerned about that. We need some consultation with the development industry on the impacts that these changes will have. We're concerned about, about prohibiting concurrent applications. Counselor Brendan asked a really good question. If you have a plan of subdivision application, we have to go through that entire process, go through a pre-con, go through the timelines for that, public notice, get to council, go through all that for the zoning. And then once we have the zoning approved, we have to go right back to step one and start it and do it all over again for a subdivision. So you could be as council, hearing an application for a zoning amendment on a subdivision and then not get the plan of subdivision in front of you for six, nine, twelve months afterwards. It just seems like it's very inefficient. I understand why they're doing it. We just think that there's better ways to address that, and we'd love to have the opportunity to sit down with staff and talk about some of these things. There's an ongoing concern about this issue of not accepting payments until staff has reviewed applications and deemed them complete. We think that's a bit contrary to the Planning Act, to be quite frank, and it just adds time to the development process. We're, the collaborative pre-con process, again, I heard a counselor man, you know, two meetings instead of one meeting. Yes, we agree that that is, that's just going to add more time. We're waiting for staff meetings. We're waiting for people to deem things complete. It's just taking more time, more hoops, more things to jump through. There was a question here about, about timelines from pre-con to council. The silos application, I think, came out. That was five hundred and forty-seven days from the day we had our pre-con until we got into this council chamber. A lot of that was our time preparing the application, but a lot of that was staff time as well. So I'm really happy to hear that staff is working hard to, to trim that down. I was ecstatic. I caught Brandon's eye when we heard one week. And I was over, that's, that's amazing. That'd be fantastic. We're really hoping that that can come, come forward. We are concerned about fees, your fees for your planning application. Norfolk is proposing over a three hundred percent increase in planning application fees between 2022 and 2024, over three hundred percent. I went and looked at what your neighboring municipalities are charging in 2023. I'm, I'm around numbers, so it's easy. Haldeman, I'm talking about a zoning, just a regular zoning application. Haldeman County, four thousand dollars. Brant, three thousand dollars. Elgin, eight hundred dollars. Tilsonburg, two thousand dollars. Norfolk, ten thousand dollars. We're more than double the next highest, more than double. And then in 2024, we're going to bump that up to twelve thousand dollars. That'll be three times the next highest. Sure, some of these other municipalities are going to increase theirs in, in 2024. I talked to Pam Duesling. You know Pam, she used to work here. Brant is increasing, their increase for 2024, two percent. So our fees are very high compared to our neighbors. You know, we had a meeting back in November seventeenth with the, with staff. It was a Norfolk Development Industry Session. The changes we're talking about tonight with these changes in pre-con, that we can't have two applications going at the same time. Well, we didn't talk about that. We were, I was really surprised that there was no discussion about that at that Development Industry Session. And November ninth, staff mentioned that this, this meeting was advertised by a, in the newspaper. That's how I found out about it. We were, it was a real challenge for us because the, the app, the amendments that are here before you were not, you didn't post them on your website until the staff report came out. We asked for them. We couldn't get them. Thank you. We had to go down to the staff, stand at the counter with the cell phone and take pictures of sixty-one pages. That's how we were able to get the report. It's not really development industry collaboration. So we think there's a need. This is what we're asking for. We're asking for staff to come to the table with the development industry and talk to us and find out how we can work collaboratively together, together so that we can address their concerns on timelines and still get development pushed through Norfolk County in a timely manner. These timelines we're talking about, the ninety days, the hundred and twenty days, all those days, legisley, we keep hearing legislative time, those have always been there. That's not, those are not new. They have been in the Planning Act for a long, long time. The only change is now if you don't make them, you gotta pay, you gotta refund some fees. But those timelines have always been there. So our concern is that the changes that are proposed are going to make it longer, not shorter. So we're just asking for the opportunity to sit down with staff and have some collaborative discussion on how we can change some of this stuff to make it better and faster. That's all we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I think that's reasonable. Now you have the staff report in front of you, and then we'll get a subsequent one with some updates and some measurables, and we can definitely do that. But now, in between now and then, my suggestion would be to take the report and make some suggestions in writing, and then we can definitely sit down and bounce them off staff, see what they have to say and, and go from there, knowing that we'll be back in the new year to keep, keep discussing it. Are there any questions from Mr. Valley? Go ahead, Counselor Van Passen.
Well, I'm thankful for your comments, Madam Mayor, but I think that we also should commit to that meeting with the development community and not in the timelines of a pre-consultation report of the next six months. And, you know, can we do that before, in, before quarter one of 2024, when a report's supposed to come back to council? Have our staff sit down with the development community and try to get some things to make it work better.
Yeah, I think staff are going to tell you that they just did that. So maybe we bring in a couple, a couple players with Mr. Valley and bring Brandon and Tricia to the table and being set up already?
Madam Mayor, we, we've already scheduled a meeting for next week, and we can certainly schedule additional ones, but that there is already meeting with some industry representatives scheduled for next week, including from the Home Builders Association, et cetera. So we can expand that list or we can, we can have additional meetings, but there's some things already scheduled.
That, that meeting was scheduled, I think, either this morning or this afternoon in a result of a bunch of emails that were flying around with staff. And so that actually was scheduled today.
Okay. Okay. So if you're able to attend, I will come and join if I can attend and listen. And sorry, you said something, but go ahead, because I have a question, but I need to find it. Counselor Brennan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I, I attended a meeting, Brandon, correct me, it was a couple of Fridays back at the Talbot Gardens, and this certainly wasn't on the agenda with a lot of other, the planning area, economic development were on there, different things. But I think this stuff is very important, very important to our development industry, and we've got to start to streamline this thing somehow. So I, I think we got to have that same group again or a meeting with that group where we can get all the input and help maybe streamline this process. It's not staff's problem. It's really something that we have to look at as council and from the development side to, to streamline. And as far as the cost, I think that's something staff can address on their own, but I, I really think the meeting is in order to, to do that. So.
Nicole and Tricia, do you, do you have an agenda from that meeting? I apologize, I wasn't there. Or was there information that was handed out? That I can see?
Through the mayor, it's tricky because I can't see you, but for, are we talking about the industry session? An agenda? There was an agenda and there were updates. This item was highlighted briefly at the session and spoken to, and there were some questions about it at that session at a high level.
So there is a meeting scheduled. We can discuss it again with partners, but I guess the, then to be efficient, we shouldn't just have a few players at the table. So I hate to ask of a full other industry night, but are you able to send out the meeting that you already have scheduled to everyone and/or record it to share it with everyone? I don't, I'm not asking you to go and book a hall and have another industry night, but if you're having a meeting, I, I think we can't just pick and choose who's going to come if the message is going to be, we didn't talk about it.
Thank you. I think for this meeting and just based on the timing and to be fair to others, perhaps we have this, this meeting next week and then likely review that feedback. And then early in the new year, my suggestion would be to have another meeting or discussion with the industry group to gather feedback, to give staff some time to review, also go back to external legal counsel as well.
Okay. I guess on a high level, Mr. Valley, I think all of council agrees with your comments. We want to work together. We're also concerned about changing and extending timelines. I understand why staff do the payment the way that they do. We know that we have a resource problem. So I would be interested on a high level in continuing down the path suggested by staff. I, I hear you on the, on the fee structure as well, but I just know that we don't have any money anywhere else to compensate if we adjust the fees. So the ideal plan is to find the most efficient, effective service to pump out development files that are solid with great planning and meet the expectations of, of your industry. I'm almost just wondering if we need to rip the Band-Aid off and try something new here because what we're currently doing, we're hearing, isn't working. And maybe council takes a leap of faith with staff for six months or eight months and let, and lets them try out this new plan. We measure the statistics. We see where we're at. We collect feedback from you and others and, and go from there because we're going to have to. And, and maybe we're meeting in the middle while we have a discussion in an industry meeting before we ultimately decide what the outcome is. But we've got to try something. We know it's, it's not working as is right now for a lot of people as well. So let's keep the conversation rolling. Hopefully you can get to the meeting this week. We'll have another development meeting in the new year and then a Q1 report to council with some measurable data, stats, timeline and so on. Does that suffice until then?
I, I think that would be great. I think if you put this out to the development community and ask for their input, you're going to find that developers are entrepreneurial spirited people, and they will find, they will come up with suggestions that can be workable and can achieve both goals at the same time. So, you know, if I use the example of we can't have concurrent applications. So you have to get your zoning and your official plan done. You got to go pre-con. You got to wait for minutes, which I, ten days or five days, I'm ecstatic to hear that. You got to put your stuff in. You've got to wait ninety days, get your zoning approved. And then once that's done, you wait for the appeal period to enter, and then you go back to square one and you start again. And you go through that whole process again for the subdivision. The rationale for that is that there's a difference in approval timeline of ninety days versus a hundred and twenty days, and that we don't want to have those being offset. Okay, fair. So is there not something that we could simply say, you can't submit the, the second application until the first one's already been there for thirty days, and now they have the same deadline? Then councils, those kinds of ideas will come forward. Maybe there's a reason from a staff perspective that won't work. I don't know. But we need some creative thinking to figure out how to do this. The checklist idea for the pre-con is amazing. I've seen that at other municipalities where you go and you sit and you have your pre-con meeting, and at the end of the meeting, they literally hand you the pre-con minutes as you walk out the door. That, and that's what they do. They just have a checklist. It's all done actually before you even get to the meeting. It's, it's fabulous. And some municipalities hand it to you a few days before the meeting, so that when you come, you've already got the comments you compare, you can review. There's lots of different ideas out there that my clients have and I have, and it's just, I, I just really hope that we can find a way to work together so that we are not talking about two years for a subdivision application process, because I think that, that's certainly not going to bring more homes faster.
No, I think those are fair. We've been in this term for a year now. We, we tried to add some more resources at budget. Staff are trying as well. So, yeah, let's do it. Let's see what we can come prepared with that are, you know, solution oriented and see what staff can work into the legislation and what they can't. But I think that's a good, good jumping off point and, and we'll leave it at that. We'll get back together before February, before the report.
Perfect. And, and please remember, as I started off the beginning, there's, there's a lot of good stuff in here. Staff have done a lot of great work, and they've been responsive to a lot of the asks that we've had. But there's some things that are a big concern as well. So we just need to iron those out. But thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. And there's no one on the line that wishes to speak to this one? I see staff only. Just confirm for a moment. Okay. All right. With that, there's a staff recommendation before us. We've given some direction and guidance to staff. Was just receiving it as information. It's not endorsing it. Pardon? I, I don't, sorry, I apologize. You didn't want to speak earlier. No, it's good. Thanks. Okay. Is there a mover and a seconder for the staff recommendation? Moved by Counselor Huffman, seconded by Counselor Columbus. All in favor? That is carried. And that leaves us with a five forty motion to adjourn moved by Counselor Huffman, seconded by Counselor Barry. All in favor? That is carried.